Good evening, everyone. Pursuant to the Board of Education bylaws, the first meeting in December is an organizational meeting. Therefore, I will preside over this meeting until a chairman has been elected. I will call this meeting to order. May I have... Actually, we're back in. We're in open session, so let me change this. See, I'm not doing very good on my first opening of this meeting. There, I will preside over this meeting until the chairman has been elected, which is our first order of business after the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. We thank you for the time we have together tonight for this meeting. Let us all support our teachers and staff and be thankful that we are all back in school. Bless our students and keep them safe from harm as we begin this holiday season. Amen.
Amen.
I will now call the annual organizational meeting to order. Our first order of business is to elect a chairperson or chair and vice chair of the board, and we will use the following procedure to do that. I'll open the floor to nominations for chair first. After I close the floor to nominations, I'll call for a vote on the nominations for chairman in the order in which they were received. If there is a majority vote, the person will be elected chair. If there is not a majority vote, I will call for a vote on the others nominated as chair, and so on, until there is a majority vote to elect a chair. We will use the same procedure to elect a vice chair. I will now open the floor to board members who wish to nominate a board chair.
Superintendent McManus, I would like to nominate Shay Woodbury.
Thank you for the nomination, but I respectfully decline for this year, but I would like to nominate Board Member Kaplan.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Board Member Kaplan. I'm going to open up for other nominations. Are there any others?
This is Elizabeth Mottsinger, and I would like to nominate Alex Bohannon.
Okay, so we have also a nomination for Board Member Bohannon.
Thank you, Board Member Mottsinger, for your nomination. Unfortunately, I will have to politely decline.
So at this time, it sounds like we have one nomination for chair, and that is Board Member Kaplan. Is that... Am I following this right so far? Okay, thank you.
You're doing a great job.
All right, thank you. Is there any... Are there any other nominations for chair at this time? Okay, so with that, we will take a vote. So we will do this. We have one board member. As you see, Board Member Mottsinger is on the computer, so Board Member Mottsinger, you can either say aye or put your hand up. Other board members will just vote by saying aye. And so all those in favor of Board Member Deanna Kaplan for chair, please either raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Can you do it one more time?
Oh, aye.
Oh, okay. So Board Member Mottsinger, did you get to... I'm not sure if you raised your hand or... I didn't see it.
I'm abstaining from this vote. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so it seems like we have the majority. So at this time, we're going to make a movement, and I'm going to turn this over to chair. I'm so used to saying Chair Woodbury. I don't know what I'm going to call you anymore. Chair Woodbury. But Chair Kaplan, you all will change, and I'll bring you the rest of the script. So congratulations. Ah, they're changing shakers. Oh, my goodness. Okay.
I am honored to be in this seat, and I want to recognize Chair Woodbury, Board Member Woodbury, for her incredible service in the last three years on this board. Would you like to say a few words?
Since you asked. I believe that it is a right to learn, but it is a privilege to serve, and it has been my privilege and honor to be the first African-American chair of the West Virginia Board of Education. For the past three years, thank you so much. I said I wasn't going to cry. I thank this community. I thank my fellow board members and all of the staff here at West Virginia Forsyth County for this opportunity. I just want to say for the record, I'm in the final phase of my doctorate work. Some of you have helped me to put it together because I'm interviewing community members because it's about community involvement in public schools and how public schools can partner with the community to help children have a good chance at life and a great education. And so at this time, I have to make the decision to focus on this so that I can graduate in February, so please pray for me. Thank you so much.
We need it, Doc.
Thank you, Board Member Kaplan. Chair Kaplan.
Got some pretty big shoes to fill here. I would now like to open the floor to the board members who wish to nominate a vice chair. Board members should raise their hand to make a nomination. Would... I would like to open the floor. Board Member Crowley?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Board Member Lita Calvert-Hayes, who's been serving us in that position, gosh, for a year or two, I guess. So that's my nomination, Lita Calvert-Hayes.
Okay, wonderful. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing no further nominations, I will now close the nominations. I will call for a vote of each of the nomination for Board Member Lita Calvert-Hayes. All in favor for chair?
Vice chair.
Vice chair. Excuse me. Not chair. Vice chair. Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
On their next term. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the board so, so much. I mean, I'm very, very dependent on this board up here, and every single one of these members of this board are fantastic. They help me so, so much, and we got a great, great board, and we're going to be even better than we could possibly ever be. So we need your support, and we thank you, thank you, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Congratulations. So next, we are going to have approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve? So moved?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have our special holiday recognitions, and Penny Freeland, if you can come and present our wonderful holiday card selections.
Good evening, Superintendent McManus, and Chair Kaplan, and board members, and special guests, and thank you so much for being here this evening to celebrate with us this year's Selected by Tricia McManus, our superintendent, is Azelle Romero-Romero, 4th grade student from Clemens Elementary School. Her art teacher is Fran Page, and her principal is Wendy Bruington. Selected by Malachy Woodbury, Vanessa Ramirez-Molina, 12th grade student from RJ Reynolds High School. Her art teacher is Emily Beach. Her principal is Calvin Freeman. Selected by Lita Calvert-Hayes is Sydney Reeves, 12th grade student from Glenn High School. Her art teacher is Erin Jones, and her principal is LeDwane Pratt. Selected by Andrea Braemer, Chloe Randell, 9th grade student from West Forsyth High School. Elizabeth Betson is her art teacher, and Kevin Spainhour is her principal. Selected by Leah Crowley, Ash Hobgood, 8th grade student from Jefferson Middle. Her art teacher is Kelly Vincent, and her principal is Shane O'Neil. Jackson McLeemore, 3rd grade student from Rule Hall Elementary. Henry Moss is his art teacher, and Shannon Bowles is his principal, selected by Alex Madison Kramer, 7th grade student from Southeast Middle. Denise Kainer is her art teacher, and Stephanie Gentry is her principal, selected by Dana Heidi Seensoon, 9th grade student from East Forsyth High School. Terry Hester is her art teacher, and Rusty Hall is her principal, selected by Deanna Jose Moreno-Cortez, 8th grade student from Mineral Springs Middle School. Sarah McNeely is his art teacher. He was selected by Elizabeth Mottsinger. Ortencia Elizabeth Colom, 3rd grade student from Forest Park Elementary School. Natasha Crisp is her art teacher, and Trent Watkins is her principal, selected by Marilyn Parker. All right, if you are a parent or a special guest with one of these fantastic artists, if you would please stand at this time. Art teachers and principals of these students, if you would stand at this time. And once again, congratulations to all. What wonderful work. Stand still. You have a present coming, guys. Don't move.
If one person's in person, you're people.
Yeah, I'll take them. I'll take them. Unfortunately. Yeah, she came. Vanessa came. Sure. So who else didn't come?
It was just the bottom two. Oh, we had Natalie and Jose. Chloe's not here, I'll take it.
While the students are waiting and we're waiting, I just wanted to make a quick comment to the students and to their families and art teachers and everything. You could see by those cards how absolutely amazing the artists... And those were... To pick this, honestly, this is something that should be very exciting every year, and it's something I dread because I literally can't narrow it down. I narrow it down usually to about 30, and then from there, I'm like, I narrow it to 20, and it takes a lot of time because so many are amazing. So I just want to say, all the students that submitted a card, thank you. They were beautiful. To the winners, it... I'm probably speaking on behalf of all of us. The fact that you were picked out of all the cards, and you could see all the different styles, which says a lot about each of us and our different personalities and what we like, but amazing job to our students.
And I'd like to have a shout-out for Board Member Braemer's daughter, Haley Braemer. She also... She did not submit this, but we all have this lovely copy of this card, and I just think it's absolutely beautiful. So thank you so much for giving it to us. At this time, we're going to hear on the public comments on the agenda items. At this time, know that we reserve this time to hear comments only on the items that are on tonight's agenda, either for action or discussion. And when you are called upon to speak, step up to the green X at the podium, direct your comments to me as the chair, and know that while we are not able to respond, I may direct you to a staff member who can answer a question when appropriate. We do ask that you be respectful, kind, and know we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. While we hope it does not, should the comments become personal attacks, contentious, or otherwise disruptive, I reserve the right to end the comment, period. Because we have so many members of the community that would like to speak, usually we are given three minutes, but I think we're going to shorten the time to two, so I'm excited to start and hear everybody's comments. So the first person is David Singletary. If you could come up, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Congratulations, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, for your continuation, and of course, your service, each and every one, to this board, also you, Madam Superintendent. Thank you. I am David Singletary. I'm a resident of Forsyth County. I'm going to speak with you this evening on one of the action items that you will have an opportunity to discuss and act upon. Action for Equity was formed roughly around the time of 2018 and started as Action for Ashley. After that time, it has grown to, once again, become called Action for Equity. Tonight, you are going to consider allocating $1.4 million of federal emergency relief funds for this particular organization to pilot a mentoring program in four schools. I beg you to ask a couple of questions this evening and consider not supporting this particular contract as it's presented. Would this effort not be better served, since it is a pilot program, if it was started in one school and limited to maybe $400,000? Is a group that has never had a budget of greater than $82,000 capable of organizing and managing a budget of $1.4 million? Is a group that has no visible infrastructure able to even coordinate the manpower necessary with managing two high schools and two middle schools? You have an obligation, as servants of the community, to ask these questions tonight. These may not be local taxpayer dollars, but all public funds are taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singletary. Next, we have Jacob McElany. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
It's close enough.
Okay. You have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jacob McElany, and I'm speaking in support of Action for Equity. I'm a 7th grade teacher at Paisley IB Magnet School. My 7th grade has 10 classrooms in our hallway, and currently, we have seven full-time teachers for the largest grade in the school. So a simple lack of dedicated bodies is our largest problem. Having local leaders and people from the community step in will be a major asset for staff and students. We need to be proactive rather than reactive. We need to have community partners, early intervention, and healing for restorative justice. I'm here to give a few personal anecdotes, my experience this year in a middle school. The first one happened within the first few weeks of the school year. Two of my students got into a fight in my classroom. The instigator had been agitating a student in the neighborhood, and they both brought the conflict into my room. The other student attacked the instigator. I placed myself between them and stopped the attacker and forced the instigator into the hallway. Due to a simple lack of bodies, the violence continued, and a teacher was injured in the process. A second violent incident occurred after, and another teacher got involved. That teacher was restraining the student, and she was unable to contact anyone via the phone. I came over and served as a violence intervention person that day as my room was nearby. I allowed that other teacher to leave the room, and that's... And the second teacher that was involved was injured in the fight and had to miss days of work. I've been present during nasty fights of dismissal, and I've borne witness to fights that happen immediately next to campus while parents drive by. I've had to restrain violent students this year in my classroom and in the hallways. Videos have surfaced from other violent incidents and conflicts across the district. A few of these incidents were gang affiliate, and schools do not have enough resources to deal with escalating violent activities in schools, and early intervention rarely happened due to the current conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Bailey Allman.
Good evening, Superintendent McManus and members of the school board. My name is Bailey Allman, and this is my seventh year teaching 8th grade at Paisley IB School. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote in favor of the Action for Equity pilot program. Right now, especially at Paisley, the students are not well, and neither are the teachers. We need help. Physically, there are not enough adults in the building to match the needs of the students. The level of support needs to be dramatically increased. We all owe that to our students. Fights break out almost every day, and they're not small altercations. It's not that the teachers and staff that are in the building are not doing their absolute best to support these students. It's that there are not enough of us to man the hallways, de-escalate tension with students, while also covering classes and providing restorative justice. We physically do not have the means to address the needs of all the students who are struggling. Bringing in community mentors to assist will have a highly positive impact on students who, because of teachers resignings and positions remaining unfilled, have felt insignificant throughout this year. Having five extra bodies in the building daily whose jobs are to form relationships with and stop conflicts before they happen will alleviate issues for both students and teachers. Involving families and also focusing on a way to use restorative justice in the place of both in and out-of-school suspension will also help the students place value on resolving conflict in ways other than physical fights. Please vote in favor of giving students at Paisley, Parkland, Philo, and Reynolds the extra resources they need to combat the violence and anger that is taking over our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Marshall Marvelli.
I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Kaplan, who I have a somewhat personal relationship, and the superintendent, as well as Ms. Mottsinger, who's not here this evening. I come before you not as an English I and English II teacher, because I teach in the high school program at Paisley, but in my position as the school improvement team chair. Let me say the following loud and clear: We need help. I just celebrated my 79th birthday, so I'm old enough that I have seen... I took my Salk vaccine on a sugar cube long before it was associated with another drug. And polio myelitis shook this nation to its core. And anybody who doesn't know that has lost a vision of children and iron lungs. I'm here to tell you tonight that COVID has done far worse. The human capital that is being wasted with the impact on our children can't go on. This has got to stop here, and it's got to stop now. Polio is nothing. This is a terrible impact. If we don't do this now, then when? If we don't do it for these children, then for who? I'm asking you to support Action for Equity. Please, we need your help.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Val Young.
Good evening, Chairperson Kaplan.
Good evening.
Vice Chair on Calvert-Hayes, Board members, and Superintendent McManus. My name is Val Young. I'm president of the Forsyth County Association of Educators, and I came here in support of the mentoring program, pilot program by Action for Equity. I will tell you that I decided to be a teacher at the age of six years old. I told my parents that I was going to be an educator, and they levied that the rest of my time by telling me that I had certain things I had to do to become an educator, and they used it every single time that I misbehaved. So the reason why I wanted to be a teacher was because I liked the way she made me feel, and I wanted to give that feeling back to another child. Well, I didn't know that I was going to become a motivator, an eye-opener, a trip coordinator. I didn't know I was going to be a nose wiper, a person that patted them on the back when they were crying, but those were things that I wanted to accept as an educator. Well, right now, we're in grave need of support from our community. Our children are suffering, and we don't have the hands or the manpower to help them. I know that every single person up here wants to do what's best for our children, and a great mentor can change the trajectory of a child's life. Not only the trajectory of a child's life, but that child, that child's child, and for many generations to come. We're at the point that we can change this world right now. We have to solve these problems, and they can't be solved by policing them. They have to be solved by us having relationships with our children. Our children are not going to tell us what's wrong with them if they don't know that we love them. We have to love them enough to fund this pilot program by... From Action for Equity. And not only fund this program, but make a way for this program to expand to everybody in our district.
Thank you. Next, we have Yvonne Williams.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Williams. I'm a retired Forsyth County educator. I'm speaking tonight to ask you to approve the contract for the Action for Equity mentoring program. The tragic events of September prompted many discussions in educational groups about how this could be prevented in the future and how we were going to make our students and educators feel that they are safe in our schools. The time for discussion is over, and the time for action is now. I'm asking you to support and make the necessary investment in our schools and our educators and our students. Help them feel safe. I'm asking you to back these evidence-based violence intervention and prevention strategies that have been proven to work. I'm a retired educator, 26 years of classroom service in a classroom, and I'm telling you that suspension expulsion does not work. That's not the answer. My last nine years of teaching were at Parkland High School, one of the schools included in this pilot mentoring program. When I came to Parkland, I was a veteran teacher of 16 years, but I learned more in my nine years in Parkland how important it was to talk to students, to listen to them, and to talk to their families. Once, I had a troubled student who repeatedly was being written up for aggressive behavior. I was preparing to write him up again when I received a call from his minister. The minister came with the student to my classroom, spoke to me, asked me to give this young man a second chance. He said the com- He said the community, the parents, and this church, the minister, would make sure that student succeeded. I tore up the D1. The student went on to graduate in the spring. Educators should focus on education, but we also must be sensitive to our students' needs. We cannot do it alone. Please support this Contract for Equity program.
Thank you. Next, we have Karen Cuthrill.
May the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in their sight. Superintendent McManus, Board Chairperson, and members of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board, I stand before you in support of the Action for Equity Community Mentoring Program. The district is implementing the Cassell Theory of Action Framework for social and emotional learning. The Action for Equity Community Mentoring Program is aligned with Cassell's Theory of Action Framework. We need continuity. Like Cassell, the Action for Equity program requires the support of educators, students, school, family, community, and the superintendents. The superintendent is leading this charge, and we need to allow the superintendent to lead. We have this support, as you can see, by those of us sitting here tonight. Adult SCL requires that we examine ourselves and our cultural biases. Before you cast your ballot tonight, I request that you look inside of yourself and determine if a personal or cultural bias based on race will prevent you from voting yes on a plan to reduce violence in our schools. And if it does, I am requesting that you let it go. That you let it go. That you let it go for our children. The Action for Equity Community Mentoring Program is your chance to love on our students, our educators, our families, and the community by aligning then to decrease school violence while increasing social, emotional learning. Love is the most important feeling. This vote is your opportunity to love. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Arturis Peterson, if I'm saying it correctly. Oh, thank you.
How y'all doing today? It's a pleasure to be in front of y'all. My name is Arturis Peterson. They call me Papa. I'm the founder of Enough is Enough. And, you know, I hear a lot about money. You understand what I'm saying? But a lot of these people that's in this position right now, they have kids. It ain't about the money. It's about our kids. What our kids are seeing happening right now today, that ain't nothing that we want our kids to follow suit in. So, what we're asking, as a team, as a collective whole, Act for Equity, New Life Nevada, Enough is Enough, we come and we plead for the simple fact that we want to willfully help our kids, our community. Every kid, they ain't just getting in the present situation. We have some type of contact or some type of affiliation with them that we can interact and help them become great. That's our sole purpose of this matter right here. I thank you greatly for accepting us and seeing the light, because it's very necessary. You know, maybe we not, we holler, "It ain't my kid, it ain't my kid," till it becomes your kid. You know, whoever thought it would be in Mount Tabor? You understand? And both of those guys that was at Mount Tabor, I mentored. Both of them. So, I lost two kids. So, if there's any way we can interact or intercede to try to help this situation come about, let's not think about money. Let's think about our babies. That's more important than anything right now in this world. Being able to assist our kids, our schoolteachers, our principals, whoever's in the schoolhouse to make them to understand that their duty is their duty, and our duty is the duty is to prevent. That's all we want to do, prevent, and let our teachers teach. Thank you greatly.
Thank you. Next, we have Nikia Stinson.
Greetings, all. I come to you on behalf of Enough is Enough. I'm the co-founder of Enough is Enough, as well as a retiree of Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System. Also, a returnee of Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System, but no longer here. But that's neither here nor there. But I come to you from the educator perspective. Eighteen and a half years as a teacher assistant. And as you know, a teacher assistant takes on many roles of a teacher. And I have seen many situations and circumstances where a lot of the kids do seek love. We have so many kids in our community that are parents in most of the households, so they do not know how to be an actual child. But with this mentorship program, we will come in, as was mentioned, with the love aspect, as well as prevention and as well as intervention, to make sure that our kids succeed. Also, that our teachers are able to teach each day and to cut down on the senseless violence and interactivity inside the classrooms. So, if you all will welcome us into your school system, as well as welcome this pilot program, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Calvin Clements.
Good evening. Congratulations, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I come to you in support of Action for Equity. I am also or plan to be a practitioner in one of the schools listed. I have about twenty-five years in juvenile justice. In addition to that, in the community, which I've reared in, I'm a business owner, and this is my opportunity to give back. This is a new program that, of course, is necessary. I feel that when we love and give love, it is indeed returned. This is an initiative that we have the opportunity to model and take into other classrooms or schools. And it is base-driven, and it's proven. We ask that you support it, support us, support our children and our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Margarita Wisely.
Hi, how y'all doing tonight?
Hey.
I'm coming to you, speaking in support of Action for Equity's pilot program. In most schools, the percentage of counselors, social workers, and psychologists does not meet the recommended professional standards. And no matter how well-trained teachers are or SROs, they can't provide the same ongoing support or trauma-informed care as professionals or someone from the community with the lived experience, the knowledge, and the resources to support these students and their families. For this reason, I believe we should implement Action for Equity's pilot program in our schools. The program takes evidence-based approaches of community involvement and intervention to fix the issues in our schools. Through community and social intervention, exposure to opportunities, organizational and institutional change and development, and expanded community services, this collaboration of teachers, professionals, parents, and students could decrease violence in our schools and in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Velata.
I know I signed up to speak, but Ms. Ocasio here is a very important guest and person, and she did not sign. So, I wanted to give you guys a couple of words and let her speak on my behalf. I'm David Velata, founder and director of New Life Noa Vida. I've got thirteen years of mental health experience working with these kids in the community. I'm founder and director also of a mentoring program called Beating Up Bad Habits, where we have our kids here off the streets, boxing, changing their ways. Some of them are from Middleford. Mrs. Noah's Noahs, she's come out, and she's beginning to see who we are and what we do, and she's seen the changes. If this is what we implement in our community, just imagine what we can implement in your schools. We've also done a lot of different things in the community with peace treaties amongst Surenio gangs. These kids were known to be murderers and shooters because of the life that they live, the community, and stuff that goes on, who we cannot blame because they're misjudged, and there's nobody at home to care for or guide them. But I'm not going to say too much, and I'm going to stop myself right here and I say. Pardon, you guys are kind of old enough to understand my respect. When did schools stop being a second home? And when did the teachers stop being my second mom? What's going on here that we can't respect our teachers in our schools and learn? We want to give these places a piece of tranquility so the kids can do that. And I introduce Mrs. Ocasio.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daisy Ocasio, and I'm here tonight due to the fact that this gentleman had reached out to me. My son Julian Rodriguez was a victim on Friday at Reynolds High School for standing up for his football coach, who was being disrespected by another student at the school. And my son was jumped by about ten individuals. Fortunate, blessed that my son has no injuries. He's alive today, and he has accompanied me tonight here.
Excuse me, I'll allow thirty more seconds. Go ahead.
And, thank you. And not, I feel Julian is very fortunate. He has a lot of mentors in school and at home, which a lot of other students do not have any, not even at home or at school, which is a very much need, especially in today, especially today with everything that's going on. And, um, that's about it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we have LaShika Witherspoon King.
Hello.
Hello.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to say I'm kind of similar in another town doing the mentorship. And like I said, it has really helped the kids up there. There haven't been any, you know, it's me and three other women, and it has not, you know, no classrooms have been interrupted since we've been inside of the classes and coming in and checking with the kids and talking with the kids and just building a rapport with the kids. So, I think this pilot program should be started. I mean, because right a couple of towns over, it's really working, and they see the progress and the help that you give the kids. And then you're going to their homes. The teacher can't go to each child's home. They can't go and be in the homes with the kids. So, I think this pilot program will be a great program to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nyanna Covington. Is that correct? Oh, thank you.
Two minutes for a lifetime. Let's see what I can do. My name is Nyanna Covington. I am a Winston-Salem native. I am also an alumni of Paisley, Reynolds, and Parkland High School. So, hearing everything tonight, all of seven points, I do believe that the pilot program is beneficial to each and every school in the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System. And I only speak from the heart because, like, I've lost friends, peers, many classmates. Even still to this day, I'm in college. I go to Winston-Salem State University. And I don't want to see any more kids. My sister goes to Reynolds now. And hearing her in fear of other kids being a threat to her, I don't like that. And I didn't have to grow up like that. Nobody that I grew up with had to grow up like that. And I hate the fact that it did carry over from the home into the school. Because as Mr. David said, you know, school is a second home. It's a safe space. It's a comforting space when you have problems at home. Like my mother and the kids said, kids don't have time to be kids. But I do hope for the future that kids do get to be kids. I myself want to start my own nonprofit for incarcerated families, for kids who have incarcerated parents, because you take on so much. Me being one myself, I took on so much, but I wasn't alone because I always had my mom. But I do not want to see anybody else fall under the hand of senseless violence, gang affiliation, anything of that nature. So, I do hope that you all will consider this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Shante Graham.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
My name is Shante Graham, and I am standing here on behalf of Enough is Enough. And I want to ask that you guys consider allowing and pushing this pilot program for Action for Equity. I'm asking this because with mentors and with people that are going into the school systems, as well as into the communities, they make a huge difference in a child's life. Action for Equity and the mentorship program, we are actually scientific-based and evidence-based practices. And I stand here as the proof. I was born and raised in low-income housing. I stand here today because of people who cared, people who looked out for me in schools, people who looked out for me in the community. I stand here today with two degrees. So, I'm the proof. But the proof doesn't exist without those people that could push you. Our kids are suffering because everybody don't want to be disruptive. People want to learn. Kids are at school that want to learn. But because of the lack of the help from enough bodies on campuses, those that are wanting to learn are being disturbed by those that want to be part of a disturbance because there's not enough people there to, you know, for the manpower. So, I just want to say I am excited about this whole program. I know that it can work. I just beg and plead with you all to give us a chance to show you that it will work. And I think, to sum it all up, we have grown so far away from it takes a village, everybody is every man for themselves. I just want to remind y'all that you guys are part of that village. You're part of the village. So, just to go back to the fact that it takes a village, I'm asking for the entire village to approve this measure. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Leslie Amato. Not sure if I'm pronouncing it correctly.
Good evening, everybody. I am Leslie Omero. I am a senior at Parkland High School. First, I want to thank God because for Him first and then them for always being there. I think at the end of the month, in November, we had a situation with my brother in a fight. There was a gun involved. But thanks to David and the whole group, that nothing, you know, happened. I feel like in our school, we need help because we just don't feel safe because we don't have nobody to talk to at home, neither at school. It's just, I guess, for us, school is just, you just go there to just, you know, let the day go by, you know? I feel like we just need somebody to talk to, somebody who are mentor, because we never had one. I am scared because my brothers, you know, they're in school. I have lost cousins to the streets. I lost my brother. He's in jail right now because of the streets. But, you know, I just beg you to accept it.
Thank you so much for talking with us. Next, we have Katie Sonnenlee.
Hello, I'm Katie Sonnenlee. I'm the vice president of the Board of Action for Equity. I came, I planned to just speak for five seconds to say I support what everyone else has already said tonight because I think you've heard the case for this and why we need to approve this mentoring program, how important it is for the kids, for the staff and teachers at the schools, for the community. This is an opportunity for transformation. This money that's coming down from the federal government is something really special, and we need to make sure we do something really unique and important and transformative with it. There's been some questions about Action for Equity. And I just wanted to set the record straight and make sure everybody knows where we are now. Yes, we started in 2018, but we now have three full-time staff. Three, they're all here tonight. We have a part-time staff member who's here tonight. Our board officers are here. Our board president, board vice president, board secretary are all here. Our budget for just this past year, 2021, was over $260,000 and we project that we're way beyond that even without whatever happens tonight in the coming year. Our growth is a testament to the faith and the trust that the community has placed in us. In four years, we've come a long way. That's because this work is needed, is desperately needed. Our funders include the Winston-Salem Foundation, the K.B. Reynolds Charitable Trust. These are two institutions in our community for, Winston-Salem Foundation over a hundred years, K.B.R. close to that. They believe in us. They believe in Action for Equity. We have countless individual donors and supporters as well. We are served by a block-owned accounting firm that is licensed in five states and is a member of the North Carolina Association of Certified Public Accountants and the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. Wynn handles nonprofits with budgets from $100,000 to $2 million. We're coming with this proposal because of all the years we've had these violence issues and these problems in our schools and our community, no one else has stepped up. No one.
Thank you. Next, we have Sam Ball.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the Board, Superintendent McManus. My name is Sam Ball. This is my sixth year as a sixth-grade math teacher at Philo Hill Magnet Academy. I don't know how many of you visited Philo Hill six years ago in 2016, 2015, 2016. It was a bit of a rough school. We had a lot of issues in that school. And about a year or so after I started teaching there, a couple of fellows started showing up in the hallways, talking with some of the students. They weren't teachers. They were just there to talk with the students. And eventually, I started noticing that they were pulling some of the more difficult seventh and eighth graders out of class and meeting with them and having mentor groups. And some of the things that they were doing with these young people were teaching them how to deal with conflict, how to carry themselves with an air of composure and confidence and self-respect, which a lot of times is lacking with a lot of the young people, especially the young men at our schools. One of those men went on to become Forsyth County Sheriff, Bobby Kimbrough. And it was immediately apparent to anyone who saw those students that were a part of that mentor group, the powerful, deep, lasting impact that that group made in their lives. So, I come before you today to express my support for the Action for Equity Mentor Program. All too often, educators, just like myself, find ourselves being acutely aware of the needs of our students and yet unable to fill those needs because we have so many other obligations just to be teachers. We need community support desperately. We already are struggling to keep people in our classrooms. Please support this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cory McCam. Is Cory here? Okay. Next, Regina Hall.
Chair Kaplan and to Vice Chair Calvert Hayes, good evening. I'm Regina Hall and I serve as the Executive Director of Boston Thurman United. We're a purpose-built initiative that is based in the Boston Thurman neighborhood and we focus on housing, health, and education. In my role, I am honored and privileged to meet with teachers and principals of the three schools in the neighborhood each month that include Paisley, Cook, and Kimberly Park. As such, I understand the help that they need with diverting the violence and the disrespect in schools. Teachers and school administrators cannot do it alone. As such, I stand in support and in solidarity with Enough is Enough Winston-Salem and in support of the Action for Equity Mentoring Pilot Program proposal. I've seen their involvement in community firsthand and I have witnessed their passion for children and teens and I have even entrusted them around my own daughter. I support them and I encourage you to do the same tonight. Supporting them means supporting our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nikita McDaniel.
I just got to take a deep breath. There's a lot going on. Good evening, Superintendent McManus and Board members. I stand before you today. I don't normally do this, but I'm going to credential myself before I speak. My name is Nikita McDaniel. I am a mother of two students within the school system, one at Reynolds and one at Wiley. I am a lifelong member of this community and I'm also the Associate Director of Community Engagement for the largest gun violence prevention organization in this country, Every Town for Gun Safety. And last but not least, these people out here, a lot of them I worked with for nearly eight years at an organization called Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods, who preaches and practices asset-based community development and has been teaching this not just in community, but also to institutions for years. So, this is nothing new. The pilot program in the school is. I understand that you all have a responsibility to this community. I understand that there are questions about money. That's always something we're going to ask. Are people fiscally responsible enough to handle the money? Well, I'm going to tell you something. I think Ms. Kate has spoke on it before about Action for Equity's track record. But I think it's important to know that the people that are doing this work are intelligent, they are capable, and ain't no bias going to drop. Because I done worked with all of them and I ain't seen none drop yet. So, I'm asking you to please consider this and check your preferences, traditions, and requirements for what you look at and make sure that you remove any biases, because we all have biases. But I am asking you to check your biases and to consider our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ashley Thompson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashley Thompson. I'm a concerned parent of a Reynolds High School student as well as a senior at Atkins High School. I am here to render my support for the Violence Interrupters proposed by Action for Equity. As a parent, my heart aches for students who are unable to participate in many paid after-school programs that I've been able to afford my own children. To me, it is time to try a different tactic in order to reach our students. I believe the proposed Violence Interrupters will be able to meet students where they are. No one is born, please remember that no one is born bad, but corrupted by learned behavior. A lot of these students do not have the proper resources or outlets to be able to vent their frustrations or to be able to properly function in everyday life like everyone would want them to. With the proposed money is my hope that more constructive programs for at-risk youth to encourage them to dream again, look towards the future outside of circumstances and outside of circumstances outside of their control. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, we have Sheri Harry.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sherifa Perry and I am coming in support of Action for Equity. I'm a concerned parent. I have a 15-year-old child now at Archer Reynolds High School that is in counseling and has been in counseling since the first incident at Mount Tabor. I feel for my child's life every time he walks out my door. At 15 years old, he stands at 6'2", 253 pounds and he is mistaken for people on a regular basis. To see at one school that you can have 10 fights in one week when you have officers at the school, you have cameras, that I've seen myself, I'm an Archer Reynolds alumni. I've seen the cameras that reach all the way to Baptist Hospital and you can see a perfectly lit up cross or star that's on the building. You can count how many points and how many lines are in that star with their cameras, but the cameras don't see enough or fast enough to catch our children, to save their lives, to keep them protected, to make them feel whole. I am currently enrolled at University of Phoenix to become an educator because I also have a son that's autistic and I have to teach him how to be better and how to behave in certain areas so he will know to do so, he will not be out here or mistaken or confused by somebody else as well. And it's just hard to know that at any moment, it could have been my child. I've been through mentoring because I was bullied as a child. And to know with enough is enough, new life, the name speaks for itself. No one had to get up here and say anything about it because it speaks volumes by itself. And I really ask for your support and that you go ahead and go through with this so our children can be safe and feel safe and know that they have someone else that has their back as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Our next order of business is the discussion items. We're first going to hear about the legislative salary and a bonus update. So, Ms. Gillis is here. She'll be walking in the door any second. There she is.
I thought I was next after this update. Okay. So, as you know, we got a state budget, finally, after three years. Let's clap for that. Because it's been a while. So, having said that, it is probably the most difficult budget I've ever seen because there is so much in it and so many changes that they put like three years of items into one budget. So, gentlemen and I are here today to at least go over the salary and bonus updates. A lot more to come, but right now, we just want to get through this one. This is going to be enough. Okay, so, state budget was recently approved. We got a lot of salary-related items that I'm going to go through in these slides to follow. But I just want to clarify some things first. Employees will receive a locally funded bonus of either 700 or 500 that was approved by this board on October 12th. This bonus will be paid out on December 16th, 2021. There was a News and Observer article that came out on Friday stating that the state will provide a $1,000 bonus to all state employees and teachers on December 21st. This was a misprint. Per DPI, the agency will be printing a retraction and clarifying this soon and I think it actually happened today. So, for everybody out there, that article was not accurate. There are bonuses coming however, but not December 21st. That is the state's payday. That is not our payday. All right, so, we want to talk about teachers and certified support staff first. And as a note, certified support staff includes all other non-teaching positions that are certified, such as counselors, psychologists, social workers, audiologists, facilitators, speech pathologists, and media coordinators, or anybody else paid on the certified pay scale. So, for those positions, including teachers, there's a step increase for all, plus 1.3%. That's going to be added to their salary schedule. The average increase, including the step, is 2.5%. The range of the increase, including the step, will be 650 to 2680 annually, which is a 1.3 to 5.4% increase. Psychologists, SLPs, which are speech-language pathologists, and audiologists shall receive an additional $350 monthly to be included in their state-based pay. School counselors are going to receive an additional $100 per month, then included in their state-based pay. There was another pot of money that was $100 million that was allocated statewide to allocate a state supplement to teachers and certified staff. Our share of that is $2.8 million. They have yet to determine how that's going to be allocated, so right now, all I know is going to be $2.8 million. Don't really know how it's going to be allocated, but that will be initial funds for teacher salaries. So, for principals, principals receive a salary increase of about 2.5%. Their pay from July 2021 through December 2021 is based on their 2019-20 ATM and the growth based on three years up to 2018-19. And then their January through June pay is based on the 2021 ATM and their growth is also based on the three years up to 2018-19. So, people are trying to calculate that. So, we got to calculate all that for the principal pay. Assistant principal pay, schedule will be 19% above the new teacher-certified bachelor's schedule. So, APs will get 19% above what teachers get in their state pay. For classified central office and substitutes. So, the classified and central office staff will receive either $13 an hour or 2.5% increase, whichever is greater. The state recently went to the $13 an hour minimum, so that means anybody who is below that will get up to that and then anybody else who's already at that will get the 2.5%. We're working on trying to get the new salary structures together now. The state budget includes also a plan to raise the minimum to $15 an hour for fiscal year 2023, which is great news. It's already in the biennial budget, so hopefully that will stick when the budget time comes around next year. So, due to the $13 an hour minimum, subrates will need to be adjusted to meet the new requirement. So, we will be increasing our subpay. Staff is recommending that the subpay will increase $13 an hour and we will be adjusting the subrates accordingly and present them at the next board meeting. So, these are the effective dates and there's a lot of them. I mean, it's different ones for different things. So, legislative pay changes for teachers, certified support staff, APs classified and central office will be effective January 1, 2022 and do not apply to persons separated from service prior to December 31st, 2021. And so, having said that, all 10 and 12-month certified staff, principals, APs, and 12-month employees will see their new pay rates in their January paychecks. All hourly and 10-month classified employees will see their new pay rates in their February paychecks because they get paid, you know, for the work done in January in February. There's going to be a retroactive salary bonus for the time worked from July 1 through December 31st. And it will be calculated for those employees who are employed as of December 31st and paid out in a lump sum by March 31st, 2022. So, we need time to put the new rates into the system and then calculate what the retro pay would be for those people that are still employed as of December 31st. Substitutes are not eligible for the retroactive salary bonus and this bonus is subject to retirement. So, instead of doing retro pay, they're doing a retro pay bonus to make sure everybody gets what they should have gotten from July 1 on. There are some statements that the bonus is also included in this budget. All these bonuses are to be paid out on or before January 31st, 2022. There's a state fiscal recovery bonus of $1,000 to be paid out to all full-time employees employed as of December 1, 2021. There's an additional $500 bonus for full-time permanent employees employed as of December 1, 2021, whose annual salary- Whose annual salary is less than $75,000. These bonuses will be prorated for permanent part-time employees. So if you make less than 75, you're going to get 1,500. If you make greater than 75, you get 1,000. There's also an $1,800 principal bonus that will be, for principals employed as of January 1, 2022. All these above bonuses will be paid out by January 31st, 2022. And will be taxed at the bonus rate and are not eligible for retirement. Employees on leave will receive the bonuses when they return to work. There will be other state bonuses that we're awaiting additional guidance from, from DPI on. And we'll communicate that information to staff when we receive it. So there are other bonuses, they have other criteria, but we're waiting for DPI to give us that information. We just had a call today and some FAQs have come out, but we have other questions. So we didn't want to talk about those bonuses until we had all those questions answered. So I'm going to talk about district approved bonuses now, just to reiterate what the district has done is outside of the state budget. So a retention bonus of $1,000 is paid to all permanent, full-time and part-time employees that were employed as of the last day of school or the end of the fiscal year and still employed as of October 1, 2021. This bonus was funded with ESER funding and was included in their October paychecks. The BOE approved two bonuses in October. As you remember, we approved that holiday bonus of $700 for teachers and certified staff and a $500 bonus for all of their employees. That bonus is going to be paid on, as, for employees employed as of December 1. And will be paid out on the 16th of December. The second bonus is an appreciation bonus that will be paid the same amount as the holiday bonus. But will be paid on May 31st for those employed as of May 1st, 2022. These bonuses are for all permanent employees and retirees filling permanent roles for the school year. Additionally, we want to bring another bonus to you. We just let you know now that we, we bring it, in the future, we have to get our grant approved first. But we want to have an additional bonus funded with ESER dollars of $1,500. That will, will present to you, we anticipate at February 2022 pay date. But like I said, we're waiting for DPI to approve that first, we bring it to you. All bonuses will be taxed at the bonus rate and are not eligible for retirement. Employees on leave will receive the bonuses when they return to work. Other legislative benefit changes are, the retirement rate is going to go from, going to go to 22.89% from the current rate of 21.68%. Health insurance premiums are going to go from 63.26 to $7,019, which is a significant increase, $600 per person. And that's probably due to COVID. Because we only, over the last three years, it's only been going up like maybe 125, 150 per year. But this is a $600 jump, so it's significant. These effective rates will be, these rates will be in effect as of January 1, 2022. So our next steps is that we will bring new teacher certified support staff, principal, assistant principal, salaries and sub, and subpay schedules to you, bring them to you at the next board meeting on December 14th for approval. The reason why we're doing it so quickly is because we want to try to make sure we get these approved by you. And then be able to get the salaries into the payroll system so we can get people paid in January their new pay rates. So that's why it was kind of a quick turnaround. We will bring the classified pay schedules and admin salary schedules to you in January for approval. And the reason why it's taken so long is because we have to calculate the new classified pay tables based on the $13 an hour minimum. So we are having to work on that and work on getting the new pay tables. Staff are in the process of calculating the new pay rates for all employees. And we'll send out more detailed salary information to staff in the coming weeks. So right now, we don't really know how much each individual person is going to be making. Because we're still working on the salary schedule, so we'd appreciate some grace. And like I said, we will communicate to staff, soon as we know something, we will notify staff of what the new pay amounts will be. Are there any questions? I know it's a lot, it's very confusing.
Board member Parker?
Yes.
Okay, I've got a few. The, so the psychologists, counselors, and all those, that additional money that they're going to get, do they also get the percentage raise?
Yes, they get the raise.
It looks like they did, so they will. Okay, so they'll, okay, so that-
Yeah, they got the raise and then they added this, this amount to their pay.
Okay. And I have a question about retirees in these bonuses. I know in the, that are working. Teachers that have retired, they've come back in a crunch to help us out, and they are working. And they did not receive the last bonuses we gave. And I guess I would like some clarification about where that, why? And, and, and the, my second question to add on to that is that the bonuses that we're going to get, give in December, are they included in those bonuses?
Okay, so the first question, the first bonus that we allocated out was the ESER-funded recruitment, I mean, recruitment, I mean, retention bonus, I'm sorry, retention bonus. And we were trying to retain our permanent employees. Retirees are considered temporary employees, their, their work ends at the end of every year and we, they re-up. Reason why we didn't include them is because we, they're not considered permanent employees. And we wanted to include our permanent employees in this bonus because we want to retain them. Also retirees are subject to a earnings cap. They can only earn so much money a year, or else their retirement could be rescinded. So we, we try not to, you know, make sure that they don't earn too much money. Because if they do, then they, their retirement is rescinded, they lose their benefits and they have to come off retirement. So that's another reason. And then also typically, we try to follow the DPI protocols when it comes to bonuses. And most of their bonuses are for permanent employees only, like this, like this ones that the state are giving out. They specifically say permanent employees. And permanent employees do not include retirees unfortunately because they're temporary employees. Because they've already worked permanently, they retired, they received benefits on top of getting their regular paycheck. So that's, that's one of the reasons why we did not include retirees in the first one. This locally funded one, we did include it because it's local funds. And we, you know, we included retirees in this locally funded bonus we're going to pay out in December and May.
And I guess I have a little heartburn with, with that. Reason being, they, I think that, I don't know, I'm just not sure what message that sends. And I think we as a board probably did not understand that that bonus did not include everyone. And so I just want to make that clear. That, I don't know where that decision was made. But, but it, I don't think that we as a board understood that to be the case. And, and I don't, I do know that other districts did give, somehow they found a way to do that. And I guess, I guess that if it was going to take a retired teacher over their limit, like I know they, they can do sometimes, you know, when they come back, they, they make sure that they've got exactly the right number of hours they're working and all, so that they don't go over that limit, so that they don't lose anything in, in that process. But they are willing to help us out to do that. And so I just wonder, you know, if it was going to take them over the limit, they could have refused the bonus, I suppose. And just said, I don't want my bonus, you know, it's going to mess me up, and so therefore I just, I'll refuse it. I just, I, I, I have heartburn in the fact that, that they were just excluded. And I don't know if there's any way that we can do something retroactively for those that would wish to receive a bonus. But I think certainly to thank them for their service to us and for them coming back in a year, whenever. You know, we are, we are scraping the bottom of the bucket. I mean, you know, Ms. Bonner Reed just said that, that we are needing every, every body and especially an experienced educator. And I just, you know, I, I would like for us, I don't know how their other board members see, I see a lot of shaking of heads here.
I support it.
I would like for us, if there's any way possible, to go back and see if there's a way that for those, those retired teachers who are currently working within our system, if they would like to receive that bonus, if we can find a way to do that. I certainly would support that because I don't want to send a message to them that, that they are not worthy of a bonus when everyone else got one.
Okay, well, I do know that we wrote, when we wrote our grant, we only said it was going to be for permanent employees, which is what we put in our grant, which is the reason why we excluded them out of that ESER-funded grant. They are included in the one that's locally funded that's coming out this, that is coming out in December and the one in May, that's locally funded. We did include retirees that are filling a permanent job. We have some retirees who may work one day a month, but then we have some that work every day. Those are the ones that we want to recognize with this locally funded bonus, the ones who work for us, you know, on a part-time basis consistently. This, so that, they are included in these other two bonuses. And we, we can calculate how much it would cost, but I cannot pay it out of ESER because we've already, you know, that was part of our application that was going to be permanently funded. So I would need to calculate how much it would cost to provide a bonus to the retirees from local funds and have the board approve that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I, being a former teacher, I know that the first few years that you teach, you're never really a permanent employee. Because if, if things change, if numbers change or whatever, of course now it's a little bit different. But, but you know, you're not on a, on a, on a contract basis every single year coming back until, because things can change with enrollment and all kinds of things. So tenure, I mean, you know, your years coming back.
I just want to reiterate that the state-funded bonus that's in the state budget will exclude retirees, the state's paying for that. And that one is, they specifically said permanent employees on that one. And the state's paying for that bonus and that one will not include retirees because of the state regulations.
But every system will not pay them, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it said permanent, it said permanent employees in, in the law.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So how many, how many retirees are we talking about? Like what's the math, what's the number that it would cost to give them that bonus?
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have to figure it out. I mean, we have a lot of retirees, so I'll have to calculate how much it would cost. I'm not quite sure, I know we have-
Retirees that are working at least part-time?
It's quite a few.
Okay. I'll have to get back to you, I think I did include that in an email before, but I don't have that email with me. So I'll have to get back to you with that number.
Wait, can I chime in for a minute? We do know, we've had many conversations, that we could not function without our retirees. I mean, they're, the work that they do, we have so many that have come back and it is a blessing. I've never seen so many retirees in a district that are back and working. I meet folks all the time in schools. So we absolutely understand what you're saying and with the value. And as we request future bonuses out of ESER, we can ask for a different request. We, I know we can't go back based on what Andrea said from that funding source. But the future requests, we can write those differently and see if they get approved by the state. Again, every bonus that's given, DPI has to approve, correct Andrea?
Well, out of ESER funds, yes.
Out of ESER funds, yes.
And so like I said before, we could, we could definitely try to get them included in the other ESER-funded bonus. But the state one, my hands are tied on that one because it's a state-funded bonus and it strictly said permanent employees. And they're funding all employees no matter what the funding source, but they're only funding permanent employees with that, with that bonus the state is paying.
Thank you so much for all the hard work that you're doing for us, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? We good? Our next discussion item is the Action for Equity Student Mentoring Program, the pilot program.
Thank you so much, everyone, for the time and this evening to, to bring this item forward. And I am just in awe of all the community members that came out to speak and our teachers and staff from our schools. And I think it says a lot that all of you are here. And I want you to know that as I go through kind of logistical things, I, I feel almost embarrassed because some of you should be coming up to do this presentation because you're living this work so much. And I'm, I'm just, I'm humbled to bring this contract forward. I have been an educator for over 30 years. I've brought and, and at the district level for, you know, probably 20. And have brought forth many contracts to boards of education, many. I've brought forth literacy contracts and working with companies who are going to do so many different things in districts. And I'm always excited for the work. But I am most excited honestly today for this body of work. Because what we're describing here today is different, is very different than traditional programming that you see. Although it is evidence-based. So again, the mentoring, the tactics, the training, the strategies, all of that is based on evidence. It's based on national programs, federal programs, and you're going to hear a little bit about that in a minute. But the idea of having grassroots organizations that are already in the communities, that know our children and know their families, and are going to be going back and forth between school and home, and school and home. You heard today from our educators, that is not happening, that they cannot do that. This is a need and I'm going to, I have not seen a community like this that has come together, come forward and said, we want to be part of the solution to stop violence in your schools, to stop violence in the communities, to make our schools safe, to allow teachers to teach and students to learn. I am humbled to be able to present this item tonight. And I, I want you all to know that, and I want our board to know that. This is a different time. I don't think any of us realized, and I am, I lived through last year as well, with our students and our board. Oh my gosh, did we live through last year and decisions and everything. I don't think I even recognized how our students would be damaged as they came back to school mentally, emotionally, socially. The year has made a huge impact on their overall health and wellbeing. And when ESER came out by the federal government, it was specifically designed to say, the pandemic has had a huge impact and districts talk a lot about learning loss. But I can promise you, learning will not be recovered if I am feeling unsafe. And if I am feeling anxiety, and if I am feeling like if I come to school, a fight could break out anytime and I'm, I going to be part of that? Am I going to be unsafe in my school? Learning will not happen, so the learning loss will continue if we don't do something different. Traditional mentoring programs have been in schools forever. I had traditional mentoring programs, I've been a mentor. That is not what we're talking about here. We are talking about evidence-based trained mentoring, but we're talking about a very different structure of how this is going to look and play out every day. A lot of mentors stop by a school, visit for 30 minutes and they leave. And it's, you know, the kids that they, that they see are excited to see them and they leave. Not these mentors, they will be in the schools and the community full-time. And they'll be overseen by other community folks that you've met tonight, some in the audience, that have backgrounds in mental health, in behavioral health, in education. And so this is not just a random act. I'll, I'll tell you, when, when, when that group of parents, that, that thing went viral, when dads went into schools, do you remember that? It was right after some of the violence we were having. I don't know how many people sent that to me and said, this is what you should, we should be doing, we should be doing this, we should be doing this. And that was unorganized. And no, those guys did not get money, but it was unorganized. But it was also impactful, they helped change the culture. What this is going to be is not just help change the culture, yes, it will do that. But it's actually going to change the lives of some of our students who are, are potentially going down the wrong path. And getting them on the right path is not only going to change their life and the life of their families, but it is also going to change the life of every other person in their school. This is a game changer. This is, I am just in awe by this project. And I'm going to share a few details with you tonight, but I will probably not even do justice. And so there are people in the audience that if you ask questions after, I might bring a couple up if, if they're specific to, that I need, that I need someone to come up and provide a more detailed answer. So again, here is the why, this completely fits with the design of ESER. And I'll, it's so funny because people want to talk about money. I've seen a lot of money go to a lot of things and I'm like, what? I'm not talking about in our district, I'm talking in general around ESER dollars. This is going to work. I have zero doubt, and if I did, I wouldn't be bringing this item together to you, to the board tonight. I have too much respect for you all, I have too much respect for our district, our students, our staff, our community, that I'm not going to bring something forward that I do not feel 100% confident will work. And so there's a need, the pandemic has made a huge impact on our kids and on our staff. Here's the response that we're giving. I'm going to say again, you've heard this is evidence-based, but the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention have a model that a lot of this is based around. And you can see, again, all of this is designed around research. There is a group and there, someone's on the phone right now called Mentor NC. They're a national, they're a state group and, and, and they have national research, resources and research that they will be providing Action for Equity in our groups today around how to manage mentoring programs, what are best practices, what is all the training that is needed. This group will work directly with Action for Equity. They also help with program oversight, they provide technical assistance. This, again, this is not just random, we, we want to come together and mentor students. No, this is a design, it is a true evidence-based design. There's a mentoring continuum that we'll be using. And you can see right there what the three components of that, that mentoring continuum includes. I hear every day about parents being engaged and about the critical role that parents play in education. Well, guess what? Our mentors and the folks representing Enough is Enough and Nueva Vida, or New Life, they will be in the homes. They will be in the schools, in the homes. That is a very different model. I, as a mentor, never was, as a principal, I was in a lot of homes. As a mentor, you know, I didn't go and get, go into the- I was in a lot of homes. As a mentor, you know, I didn't go and go into the homes with parents. You know, our mentors are going to be paired with some of our students that are dealing with the biggest struggles and challenges and who are being presented with opportunities that may make them feel connected and belonging and they're not the best choices for them. And so these folks who know the community, who live in the community, will not only be in schools, which they haven't had access before. So if you think about what's happening, they're working in the community. It doesn't come then into the school and nor have they had access. And then we've got people that have been in schools mentoring that didn't necessarily have access into the community. Think of the perfect marriage where you have both now. It is a different model, it's innovative, but it's also based on evidence. The feeder pattern, you've heard from teachers from different schools today, after tonight, I'm probably going to get emails that other people wanted in their schools. I've already heard from another group, another school that wants it, but these are the four we've chosen to start with. It's a pilot of four, but we have honestly 30 that we could do this in right now, but it's a pilot of four. Those are the strategies. Again, it's from the Juvenile Justice, Office of Juvenile Justice. Here are a bunch of groups. These groups, and these are just some of them, I'm sure that I'm missing some and I apologize upfront for missing anybody. These are all the groups that are actually committed and these are the groups that have rallied around with Action for Equity and said, you know, "You all are a group that is bringing the other groups together and helping everyone come together in the same direction as a community." That is so much needed in our community and that's what they're doing, but these are the groups. The ones that are going to provide the direct services in schools are Nueva Vida, Enough is Enough, but all these other groups, you have Val tonight with FCAE, they're all at the table together to provide the right services for our schools. And so those are just some of the ones that are vested in this. Here's some timeline. Here's where it gets into logistics, but I knew that, you know what, we're also voting on $1.4 million tonight, although I don't look at it like that and in a minute I'm going to show you how I look at it, but you can see here a timeline. The reason I brought this today and wanted it to go quickly and didn't take time to bring it to other meetings is just because of timing. We've been working behind the scenes to get the proposal into a final state, but time is of the essence. You know, every day I'm hoping that there's not another fight or that something doesn't happen in one of our schools or that another weapon is not found. Time is of the essence and so the reason we're pushing for December is because the two weeks, the next two weeks, our staffs, our school admin teams and staffs have got to have time to work with our partners from these organizations to pick, to select the right students, make sure they go to the homes and save families, this is what we're doing, do some kickoff assemblies and build the excitement. Thank you to our teachers from Paisley and the other places. Like to hear you tonight, I was sitting there thinking, "This is so the right decision, hearing you tonight." You need help and thank you for voicing that so loud and clear. So all of this is, you know, getting the mentors all hired and trained. The training is going to be upfront before they step foot in school, but it will be continuous because do you know how long it takes someone to really completely be an expert around de-escalation, restorative practices, how we deal? I mean, it is not a one and done. It is an ongoing training and that's part of this, ongoing facilitating weekly sessions with kids, all the outings that they're going to do with families, take them out of their, where they live, go visit places and do, all of that is included in this. This is not just about the onsite mentoring and then the community. There's so many layers to this initiative and also then, there's also a lot of accountability. People have asked me about accountability. There's a lot of it. We met on Monday with the organizations and with our school leaders and there is a mentoring log that will be filled out. There's an ongoing communication that will happen between the student services team at the school with the social workers and counselors, with the mentors from these programs, with the directors that are going to make sure everything's going right with the mentors. There are layers of accountability and oversight built into this and they'll be regularly interacting and collaborating with district leaders and with school-based leaders. And so I think everyone, when we met Monday afternoon, our leaders were very excited about the possibilities as well. The good news is they're going to continue working with our students over the summer because that break, I almost wish we didn't have it. Sorry, parents, you may like it, but I wish we didn't have it because that's more time for students to be away. And so the greatest thing is, they're not going to be away. They're going to be with our mentors and our folks from Nueva Vida and from Enough is Enough and then they're going to help them transition safely and successfully back into next school year because it's not like all the problems are just going to disappear, but I think a lot of them will be solved. We will have a lot of healing when we start this program. Training and support for mentors, I mentioned Mentor NC. They're on the line if anyone has any specific questions for them. I talked to about all the trainings that are going to be happening. There are mentors will meet weekly with the directors and the whole child health coordinator. It's a very calculated and specific plan. It's not just, again, I've used the word random, but it is planned and it's deliberate. I just included a quote from the Office of Juvenile Justice and it talks about mentoring because someone asked me, "Well, how will the mentors be picked?" The best mentors to work with our students that are having the biggest challenges are people that have lived in their shoes, period. So, you know, it is proven that is the recommendation from the Office of Juvenile Justice with, and this was a quote specific to youth that have, that are participating in gang violence. This is what it says directly. I didn't write this, this was a quote out of one of their books. And so that's what's so important about this. You know, they're going to pick people that have walked in the shoes, that have overcome some of the challenges, that can actually say, "I've been there and here's how you can get out of this and what we, how you can, you know, begin to see success" because I've always said, "Success breeds success" and negativity and just breeds more negativity. And so success is what we're going to be doing for our kids here. The funding, it is ESER funding and we will be the whole time, as we are looking at outcomes and results and monitoring with Action for Equity, we will be actually also looking at sustainability because what we're going to want to do is know, start planning for that now. You should never implement something that is $1.4 million that you predict is going to work and not start having a sustainability plan. So we'll be doing that together. How will we keep this going in the future, knowing that we won't always have ESER dollars, but we can be very creative as a system. And I do believe that other entities that have admitted, you know what, this is going to happen in schools, school district, you all should really look at this, at some point, everyone has to look at it because this is not just going to help our schools, it's going to help our ultimate community, which is really the responsibility of everyone. Here's the breakdown and this is what I said earlier. So everyone wants to say, "We're going to give $1.4 million to a group." Yeah, over time we are, but this is what it means per school. So for $1.4 million, it's going to be about 362,000 per school, the four schools, over 10 months of service. That will pay for five full-time mentors, .5 director, because the directors, again, I broke this down because it's so added up times four and that's across the whole program. You know, the .25 program community liaison, working on community intervention. Again, this is not just a site, school-based mentoring program, it overlaps with the community. Upfront training for mentors and ongoing, the child health coordinator that will work with our student services teams because what they'll might find is there are students that might need more services and they'll be able to recommend those services and they'll also be able to partner with other agencies. If we don't have all of the help needed, they have connections to other agencies that they can partner with as well and make recommendations for students to get the help they need. So all of these things, the assemblies and the things for students, the fun, the trips, all that is really important to this overall project as well. And here's some of the outcomes measured. Now, these are very high-level. What was posted online and simply has the breakdown, specific breakdowns of the outcomes we'll be measuring, but improve school safety and the reduction of violence. We will see a reduction of fighting when this program is in full implementation. We will see less suspensions as a result of fighting. We will see less office referrals written as a result of the mentors, the trained mentors who will become part of that school family will also be in classrooms, they'll be in ISS, they'll be helping kids with conflict resolution that are in ISS and help them not show up there again. They will be helping figure out alternatives to suspension because we know if kids are out for five days or even more, they're not learning. So they're going to be all over the place. You know, it's interesting, when some of our incidents first happened this year, we met with the school teams, they asked for more staff for like hall monitors or, this goes way beyond that idea, but it satisfies the requests that schools have made. It just goes way deeper and the folks doing this are way more trained than what we were even thinking in the first place when we started talking about this. Increased social capacity and network for identified students, this is that more students that have not had that access to mentoring will have that. Improve school-home community relations, we will see that and it says in here what all that looks like. I'm not going to go into all those details, but there are some rigorous measures that this program will, that we are measuring through this program. And then improved attendance for students. That's another issue in our district is attendance and if students aren't in school, they're not learning. And so there are going to be some very specific measurements and there's going to be regular meetings with Action for Equity and all the other providers to sit down and talk to those measures and we're also going to be coming back to the board to present ongoing data and to show progress. So with all that, and I'm sure there's so much more I could say and that other folks could say, but I am recommending this approval with Action for Equity who will facilitate and the finances to these different organizations so that we can have this program in our schools for our kids as soon as possible. So I will open up for questions.
Board member Cottle James?
Okay, thank you. I can't talk, it's sticking to my mouth. So, thank you and thank you for answering, you know, all my questions since this, we've been talking about it. And, you know, the one thing that I think you're right, that this shows it will work is because instead of us saying, "This is what will fix everything," I think, you know, when you shared with me how, you know, folks in the community in these areas are saying, "We want to take this on." And so, you know, that hasn't happened since I've been on the board and I do appreciate, I mean, I think that you're probably right, it's going to work. And honestly, until I was in here and heard really from you, I had questions about how are we going to pay it out and what does it look like? And, you know, I talked to you about Winston-Salem Foundation, all kinds of other things. Julia, one thing that hit me is that I think that we're elected to, yes, you know, where's the money going, what's going on, but also to trust the folks who are saying, "We've got the answers and we can fix this." And so, you know, I trust you.
Board member Mott Singer?
I know, thank you.
Do you have a question, board member Mott Singer?
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. How many students are we expecting to work with in each school?
Right now it's 50 per school, board member Mott Singer, but in talking, that will be determined. If we have to have, change it and do 60 in one and 40 in the other, that can happen once they start working with the principals to determine the caseload and determine which students really need to be served, but it is 200 across the four schools.
So we're talking about 200 students that are going to get touched this way, so does that mean that when you're thinking about a mentor, that it's one mentor for 10 students?
Yes.
Full-time mentor for 10 students?
Yes, yes, board member Mott Singer.
Okay, okay. And, you know, part of my concern, and I do have real concerns about not having been brought into this conversation until school board meeting basically and that that's not how we usually do things. So, you know, for me, as people know, I tend to really like to know details because that's where the devil is over and over. So I'm thinking it's 200 students we're planning on serving. So, and I'm also wondering about the Cure Violence Assessment that's coming back. I believe the county commissioners will be getting briefed on that and I'm hoping that our district will be getting briefed on what those results are and my question is, is this what they would be recommending to us?
Yeah. You know what, I serve actually on the Cure Violence steering that meets, I think it's every other week right now, and this is the work they're talking about. They're talking about the grassroots violence interrupters being part of the solution and so I absolutely believe that they would support, that Cure Violence Group would support this because it's actually what they're recommending communities do. And so, yes, and I've been part of those conversations and there's another one coming up this week, so I can give more information to our board as well about that.
So, and again, that's a concern of mine, is just knowing what are, you know, when we're getting results in a few days, it seems to me, I just, I of course have trouble voting on something two or three days before results are back because I'd like to know that this is what they recommend. My question about the 20 mentors who will be in schools, have those people been identified already? Are they already, so when I hear that they're already working in the community, are these 20 people who are already doing the work or will they be recruited and hired?
You know what, I'm thinking it's probably a little bit of both. I know a lot that have already been in agreement that they're going to be part of this, but I'm going to look at someone and say, "Are there still more mentors being recruited from the communities?" I guess I'm just going to ask anyone, or are they, have most been selected? Did you want to respond? Okay, so many of the community members have been selected.
So they've already been in the communities doing some of this work up until now and what kind of salaries are we paying the mentors out of this?
So the salary, so I don't know the exact amount for each mentor, but what I do know is the line item, and I broke it down in the, one of our line items, it talks about $775,000 for the 10 months. It included the mentor salaries, the directors that oversee the mentor salaries, the health coordinator that oversees that as well, plus the training. That line item that was in there for $775,000, I know there was, there was someone thinking, "Oh, a mentor's going to be paid $50,000 a year." That is not the case at all. The good news is they're going to be paid something, but I don't know the exact salary. That would be for, that would be for Action for-
Again, you know, we talk about salaries all the time. We know what our teachers make, for example, or what other people make. And I'm just, I think it's important to know that information when we're talking about approving a contract of, you know, are these people going to be paid better than our teachers or?
Yeah.
I think that's important.
Based on the numbers we've talked about and based on that line item, no, there's no way because the line item is encompassing of many components, not just the mentor salaries. So, no.
I know, but I have asked for specifically this, what are we paying people? Because I do think it's fair to know that. My concern, and again, sustainability, I am doing, you know, I'm sitting here now looking online about violence interrupter programs, trying to learn and understand because if this is going to make a huge difference in the lives of our children, of course I want to make a huge difference in the lives of our children. I do know that some of the things that I see look very aspirational, but not particularly clarifying and I know that I am pedantic and I, that's going to be the last thing I do in life, is to say, "I want to know the particulars. I want to know what we're paying people. I want to know how many children we're talking about. I want to know how we're analyzing it." Because I want to be able to feel good about doing this, but I don't feel good if I don't have those kinds of information. I feel like that's part of my due diligence as an elected official, is to understand those things and ask that those questions be answered and I haven't seen those answers and that troubles me. And again, I want us to deal with culture issues. I want us to address the needs of our most troubled students. I want us to address the needs of our most troubled students. I just want to also know the particulars of how we're going to do this.
Okay. I, I will get you the breakdown if I can get with our, the team afterwards, a specific breakdown. As I looked at that item and knew everything that was in that one line item, I just know that it's, it is, what, and again, this is not specific, but it's, it's very reasonable. And as far as our 200, like I'm talking about 200 students getting the direct services, but the mentors in the schools are actually going to be giving services to teachers, to other staff that are on campus and also to students that are not going to be directly getting the mentoring services. Because there, and, and you heard tonight from some of the teachers that, that just by having these folks there that have relationships with some of the students that, that are facing the biggest struggles and challenges is going to be helpful. And the training, I actually had some of the principals in the meeting on Monday say, can we all be engaged in some of the same training? And, you know, our, and so the answer is yes. We can absolutely do that and capitalize on the learnings from the mentors. So I look at this, even though 200 people will get direct services, I also look at it and you, I can't put a price tag on it, but all 5,000 students in these four schools are going to benefit from the 200 getting the direct services, but also from the, the, the support of this group of mentors in the schools every day. Um, cause again, they're going to be living there and they're going to be part of the staff. So, but I'll get you the specific, uh, numbers, uh, board member Mott Singer.
Um, board member Crowley?
When you say they're going to be part of the staff, do you mean like that they will be participating in faculty meetings or in school improvement team meetings?
No, 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 no. I, I mean, yeah.
I'm just, I'm trying to get some clarity.
I mean entrenched.
Are they going to be, and are these employees going to be like contract employees of our district or is Action for Equity going to become their employer of?
So, so, yeah, so Action Equity will be the fiscal agent of this and will be the one coordinating the efforts between the two different organizations that will be overseeing the mentors. They're not employees of the school district, they're employees of the two groups who are getting the support from Action for Equity and other, other community, community providers. Um, so, yeah, they're not employees of us and they're, when I say they're part of the school family, they're going to become very well-known in the schools and people are going to look to them to be, to be there to provide support. They're not going to get wrapped up in the other kind of meetings because they need to then be going into the communities. And I don't want them to be bogged down in the stuff that I actually, we actually don't want our teachers to have to be bogged down in some of that stuff either. But I say that to say, no, they're going to be in the community just as much. And, and this is the other difference. Their hours are not, they're not going to be like an eight to four job because a family may need help or a, a, or a student may be in crisis on Saturday or on Sunday. And that's, the mentor will be in the home to support that. So this is not your traditional, you know, eight, you know, eight to four, seven to five, whatever. It's, it's pretty much 24/7 when you're, when you're supporting our kids in their homes and in their communities, so.
Thanks. Thank you, board member Mott Singer.
And, and this funding has been, this funding of using the, these particular funds that came having to do with COVID are not local funds at all?
No. It's all ESER and, and also when, before we even started down this, this, this venture, um, we had our person in charge of ESER like run the entire program by the state. And it is very, it's a very unique program. They approved, they approved it, um, when we sent them the, the scope.
Thank you. Board member Crowley?
Yes.
Uh, the spot here.
Yeah. Um, first, I would, just wanted to thank the speakers that came before us tonight. My big concern was who was going to be mentoring and then to hear a couple of you saying that you were going to be the mentors gave me great relief. Like we are going to have the right people here because you have to have people who know your community to help your community succeed. And that's, that's just the, the most important ingredient here. So my question for you is, is it enough?
For now, enough is enough, right? No, just kidding. No, no. So, so ultimately, not, you know, at this point, this is, this, again.
It's a start.
It's a pilot, it's a start. Let's get results, let's see what happens, let's get, let's get the data and then we'll be back to, to, to celebrate and to figure out next steps, but yes.
Board member Calvert Hayes?
Yes. First of all, this is the most exciting time I've had on this board in a long, long time with what's, what's been going on. And, and I also want to say, I went to the Love Out Loud, you remember when everybody was dancing and singing and we had a blast? And I ca- I cannot see why we couldn't have donations from our community to also be able to offset other things that we have. I'm ready to donate.
Board member Bohannon?
Thank you. So, um, a couple of questions. The first is that, um, Jevlyn, do you know how many vacancies we have right now in the system, just period?
I'm looking at Jevlyn because, uh...
There's a point, I just, I want to...
I know, there's a point, there always is, correct. Off the top of my head, I don't have the exact numbers, but the ones I pay attention to the closest are the teachers and we're between 140 and 150 right now.
Right. And so, Madam Superintendent, do you find that these particular schools, that there are some, there's, there's a, a little bit more disproportionate vacancy in these schools?
They, in, in a few of them, they are probably some of our highest vacancy rates right now.
Okay. Um, and the reason why I ask is because number one, I think, first to the idea about, you know, sort of the good use of funds, I think that we all can agree that there have been things that this district has invested in that we thought at one point were going to yield certain results and then they didn't. And then we sort of are at this place where we can, we know that there's a problem and then when there's a potential solution, I know I personally couldn't sleep at night if a solution was presented and I was like on a technicality not to support it, right? And then I also just, I see the details and I'm like, this just seems to be the quintessential disruptor of the school to prison pipeline. But I also see, Ms. Thompson is on a call, um, from Philo and I'd, I'd love to hear her perspective as a principal if she's, if she can hear us.
Yeah, that, if she's, if she's, she might just be listening, she might be doing something else, so she might not want her camera on, but, uh, Dr. Thompson, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Oh, God, you look great. I was worried you might be in your, in your PJs or, you know, so.
No, I'm dressed.
You're ready, you're ready. Um, Dr. Thompson, Benika, would you share a little bit about your, um, Doc, uh, uh, board member Bohannon wanted to know your thoughts on this grassroots kind of violence interrupter in-school and community mentor program?
Okay, well, thank you. First of all, I think the pilot, I had to write some notes because we did meet and kind of read over the proposal. And I appreciate Mrs. McManus's opportunity to allow us to ask questions and provide input on the process. Um, I think this pilot has a strong potential to strengthen that strategic partnership between the schools, the SROs and the community because I don't want to negate the support and services of law enforcement's in our school. I really appreciate the SRO program, it has been beneficial. I also think that it creates a prop, um, an opportunity to add to the limited research on community and school partnerships that are strategic. I feel like Forsyth County will position ourselves to be a part of national research. So that, you know, as a researcher, that excites me, science teacher, right? Um, I'm also excited to hear that the principals, the student services staff and the school improvement teams will be able to partner with our mentors. So not only will we be providing them with the students, but also letting them in on the type of training, like the trauma-informed training that we've been doing throughout this district for some time to make sure there's a continuation of services. So for me, I, I'm excited that the risk is being taken. I think that this is an opportunity and I say with all that's going on in school, one of my teachers, Mr. Ball, was there this evening and, hey, Mr. Ball. And he does, he, he does speak to, you know, how it disrupts the learning environment. And when we talk about the number of students, it takes one student to disrupt learning for 32, if you think about it. It just depends on the level of disruption. So I think this is a great opportunity and I'm supporting it with the understanding that there is a checks and balances there, there is a partnership there that we all can benefit from.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
And then the last question I had, which is a little bit technical, is, is so will, will these mentors be required to pass our internal volunteer background check?
Yeah, that, that's part of the MO, MOA that is online. It, it outlines all of the procedures, so we'll be working closely, um, with the organizations, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Chair Kaplan, how will our CARES team members interact with this program?
Yep. So the CARES team, actually, we've, we've talked about the CARES team and I think we've listed them somewhere in the scope. Um, but there, so the CARES team, the site-based CARES team really are the student services. There are social workers, our counselors, and there may be a few other staff members. They'll be an instrumental part of this and so will the district-based CARES teams. Cause our district-based CARES teams are folks that go into communities or into homes when the school has exhausted their resources. So there will be a complete direct line of communication with the site-based CARES team, the district-based CARES team and our group. Actually, I'm sure they probably, a lot of them know each other already, folks from our CARES team and folks in this room. So, yes, they'll be, they'll be working in collaboration.
Thank you.
Board member Parker?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight. You were very, you're very passionate as well as, as Superintendent McManus, very passionate about the work. And I'm just looking really forward to, to seeing the results because I think that it is a, a way for us, everybody to partner and to get back to the village concept, which I grew up with and scared the life out of me. So I think this kept me in line, I know. So, um, thank you all for that. Just had a couple of questions. One, there were a couple of, of, there's like a .25 community person. Um, the question I had, and you guys may not have that all worked out yet, I don't know, but will that be one person or will it be in each, a, a different person for each school and each community?
One person. And it's the .25 because I divided into four, but it's one person.
That, that's what I thought, that, but they'll go into all four communities and work with, okay. And the other one was the .125, which I think was the medical person, the nurse or the health person. And will that be the same person that will go?
One person for all of them, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Is Elizabeth?
Oh, Elizabeth, I'm sorry. Uh, board member Mott Singer?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair Kaplan. My question is, who in our district is going to be keeping up with specifically the work and how it's proceeding?
Yeah. So there's two, two parts of this. So because this fits directly in student services, Dr. Stokes is going to be the, she's our, as everybody knows, she's our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Uh, she was also in our meeting on Monday. She'll oversee this, the day-to-day, like working in the, in, with the, the community organizations, she may end up giving that to one of her folks, either Dr. Kato or, or Dr., or, uh, Latrell Adams, but she's the, the, will be that, that main person. And then Dr. Hales, Kelly with, with our federal programs, she's been very closely this entire process, working through all the details, logistics, making sure that everything we're including is approved and is accurate. And she'll be working closely when Action for Equity, you know, bills the district in reviewing those, making sure they get to, um, to our, our procurement office to pay those payments. Dr. Hale will be very closely aligned to this project as well.
Okay. Um, and, and that I'm glad to know that there'll be somebody really kind of paying attention. I always believe that how we want things to work and how they do work always needs adjustment and I want to make sure that that's happening. The list of partners that was, um, earlier on in terms of who was going to be people engaged with this work, are they going to be providing some of the training? For example, Triad Restorative Justice, are they teach, are they going to be training people, are they as part of this project in conflict resolution and mediation?
Yes, so they've been part of the planning. I'm getting the nods in the audience, they have been part of the planning and will be part of the training, yes.
So, so when we see like Feeling Friends or we see different groups that have built some real, um, trust in our community as well, they will be indeed part of the training that takes place with the mentors?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, board member Mott Singer. Anybody else? Okay, that concludes our discussion. So we are now at the point of our meeting for the action items. Number one, consider approval of contract for Action for Equity mentoring program, a pilot program.
Some move.
Motion? Second? Okay, discussion? All in favor? It's very exciting.
Can they come back to every board meeting?
Yes, they'll come back to every board meeting. Um, next, consider renewal of contract with Panorama Education, Inc. So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, consider approval of the TNTP.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, consider approval of the new course request. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Consider approval of contract with Hoffman-Millan-Cortland for professional development. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. The next, consider approval of Studies Weekly Inquiry PD. Motion to approve?
May move approval. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, consider approval of Contract with Profound Gentlemen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Consider approval of Speech and Language Tele Services. Motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay? Oh, yeah, okay.
I was already moving on.
All in favor?
Oh.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Consider approval of Addendum to Contract with Procare Therapy for a Speech Language Pathologist.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, so announcements, December 14th at 4:30, we will have the Curriculum Committee. On December 14th at 5 o'clock, Finance Committee. And on December 14th, we will have our regular meeting of the Board of Education. So...
And that's a week earlier than usual.
Yeah.
Because of the winter break, okay.
So before we begin the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on any topic, let me say goodnight and thank you to our Cable 2 viewers. This will conclude our broadcast. Thank you. Thank you.